Well, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Mayor Pretempery Vasquez.
Here.
Mayor Rixey.
Here.
Councilman Leonard is absent. There is a quorum.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, would you please inform us what happened at the closed session? And if you would, the closed session for each of the boards.
On the City Council closed session.
I'm going to push the button. On the City Council closed session, we had a conference with real property negotiator on the property listed, and the council met and conferred with the negotiator for the city, gave direction. There's no action to report at this time. On Item B, the conference with legal counsel was regarding a potential out-of-court settlement, and a direction was given. That will be announced when the settlement becomes final. On the successor agency agenda, Item A was a conference with real property negotiator. Direction was given. There's no action to report at this time. Item B also is a real property matter. Direction given to the negotiator in that regard. Item C was regarding potential litigation. There was no action or litigation initiated at this time, and nothing else to report. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll proceed to the invocation, but I'd like to start by saying we have a long tradition in this town of asking visiting dignitaries to offer the invocation. And this time, I'm proud to say that my teacher from 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grades is here, Pastor Bill Lindeman. He had a lot to do with the formation of my education and my character, so if you have questions about that, you can maybe cast some of the blame in his direction. But I love him dearly as my teacher. Very few people other than homeschoolers have someone for four years in a row, and it was a great experience. And he is currently a pastor in Corpus Christi, Texas. He's here visiting his daughter in San Bernardino, and I'd like to have him offer the invocation. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will follow with Councilman Duper.
Before I pray, it'll take just a moment, I was concerned that he might share a few other things with you as well. But since he was so kind, I will also be kind. I would be anyway, and he would also be anyway. Lord God, meetings that are convened for the purpose of guiding the government, the polity formation, the execution of policy, are meetings that are not always easy. Because each who stands in the place of representation sometimes has to put their own wish and desire aside and go for what they know is best for the community. And what's best for the community may not be the popular thing to do. Lord, may these elected officials here tonight be not afraid to do what within their hearts they know is best for this community, that it may prosper in ways that will bring glory to your name. And so tonight, we ask for wisdom, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. Does the public wish to speak on any items not on the agenda? This is your opportunity, limited to three minutes each. No takers. We'll move to scheduled items. Any conflict of interest will be dealt with as it arises. Joint public hearing of the City Council and Housing Authority. City Clerk, please.
This involves a piece of property that's in the Garden Side Homes tract. There are 35 of the 58 homes in that tract that the former redevelopment agency and now the Housing Authority has interested in because of the long-term affordability covenants. For a long period of time, we could do basically nothing because of the dissolution act and other things that have transpired since that time. This is the last of the homes in that tract that the agency actually has for sale that we had purchased or had acquired through foreclosure. And we do have an income-qualified buyer. We have been able to secure title insurance for this transaction, and so we are asking that the City Council and the Housing Authority adopt the resolutions which would allow for the sale of the property. The Housing Authority will carry back the paper per prior direction.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council? I guess we have to do a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now, what's the pleasure of the council?
Do we move these separate or together?
Together.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve Housing Authority Bill R. 2-2012-11, along with Council Bill R. 2012-37.
One second.
One second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on those items? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, they're approved. We'll proceed to the consent calendar. Any items to be pulled, or would someone like to move the whole?
I'd like to pull Item 14. I'll move the consent calendar. I'd like to pull Item 14 as well.
Okay. Is there -- why don't we just deal with Number 14 first?
I just want to commend the city manager and the staff for addressing what I think is, what many of us believe has been a significant problem, which is we have some of the more dreadful-looking on-ramps and off-ramps. And so the city manager and his staff and so forth have put together a plan, and this represents a proposal that goes for approval to Caltrans that will enable us to put a low-maintenance landscaping in, and it's much needed. And I've reviewed the plan, and I'm frankly excited about this. My question is, can you give us some sense for how long we expect Caltrans to review this before we can get started?
Yes, sir. This agreement, after the City Council approved tonight, had to go back to Sacramento for them to review and approve. Even though this is their agreement that we pretty much changed the name, or put our city of Loma Linda name on it. So I'm hoping within a month, we should get a review and approve, and we will go out to bid.
And, what, 30 days for the bids, or?
Yes, sir. So I'm looking at probably early November for construction.
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Okay, then, that having been dealt with, does your motion include the entire consent calendar?
I have a quick question on Number Under 8, sorry.
Yes?
In regards to approval of the tentative Marshall Map waiver, I understand that the purpose of it was to allow for the sale of individual units.
Yes.
Does that mean that each individual unit then would have a separate tax?
Yes, separate parcel, yes. Right now, what happened is the property owner owned the whole complex, and the lease-out of the building, now the potential buyer, the doctor that leased the facility, would like to purchase the whole building. So by subdivided to separate parcel, now the property owner can actually sell that parcel with the building to that doctor that's renting it right now.
So this goes from us to the county, and then that gets recorded in the county, so the county's aware. So technically, there's the potential that there'd be additional taxes from this, because selling them individually might --
No, not really, because the building is already built, and the property tax is based on the value of the property. Now, it's just a different owner. That's all.
So as they change ownership of individual parcels, doesn't that change the tax value?
It would be reassessed based upon the current market value, so if it was bought 30 years ago, it may go up. If it was bought 10 years ago or five years ago, it may go down. Really depends on where the prices are.
Okay. Thank you. By the way, I think that land is in the IVDA land, so it actually
-- I think that's the east side of --
No, it is. I think it's in the IVDA land. Yeah, anyway.
Is this the Cape Cod building?
Yes. Cape Cod is our --
Oh, is that the Meridian? No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Meridian is the --
Okay, yeah, that's very old. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is there a second for the -- okay. Is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Okay, that's approved. Item 17, Council Bill R. 2012-36 pertaining to fire department fees. That has been continued to October 9, so stay tuned. We'll go to Item 18, committee appointments. This could go on all night, but Madam Clerk, could you introduce the topic?
There are three committees that we are considering this evening. The first one is the, if I could review all of them at once, and then perhaps you can go on with your work. The Traffic Advisory Committee, Mr. Walls had been an appointee of the university, and then when he retired and they appointed his replacement, he became an at-large member. And so we just have to confirm his rotation at this point, and he is willing to continue to serve. He's currently the chairman of the Traffic Advisory Committee. And on the Trails Development Committee, there became a vacancy when Mr. Imber was appointed to the Planning Commission. On July 10, after his appointment, the City Council also reduced the number of members of that committee to nine, so there was still one vacancy. And so you have applications to fill that one vacancy. Planning Commission, there's a vacancy because Mr. Imber, subsequent to his appointment, had a change in the status of his work, which requires him to travel, and he is unavailable for meetings. So he has had to decline the appointment. So we have invited the other three applicants to come back and address you, and you can make your decision this evening. So there'd be one for the Trails Traffic Advisory, one for Trails, and one for Planning Commission.
Okay, let's begin with Traffic Advisory. That one's pro forma. Does someone --
I'll move to reappoint Mr. Walls.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, he's approved. We'll move to Trails Development. We've got three good applicants.
And I'm going to declare a conflict on that. Recuse myself.
Okay. In the case of a conflict, do committee assignments require three remaining councilmen to vote?
Well, no. It requires three to participate, but it would require two to approve.
Okay. Do we have the option of turning the Trails Committee into a 12-member committee or whatever?
I actually want to follow up on that a little bit. What kind of participation do we get?
Very good participation. I'm okay with it, as long as they don't ask for more improvement and spending more money. That's a problem that we have.
But that will be the case whether we have two or 12.
Well, if they all attend, they'll just warm more seats. You don't even provide refreshments, do you?
No.
Okay, so.
From my perspective, I don't see a real downside. I mean, there's a tipping point for sure, but I'm willing to believe that would be beyond 12.
And I think the reason we reduced the membership is because we had no applicants, right?
Right.
Yeah, and now we have three highly qualified and energetic applicants.
So we were 10 before, and we brought it down to nine?
Correct.
Correct.
And now you want to improve it, increase it to 12?
Yeah.
We have three motivated applicants, so why not?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Perhaps not a good time. I would normally second that, but I've actually contemplated at some point combining the Trails Committee and the Parks Committee.
Well, that can happen with 29 members.
Yeah, well, that's a problem, which means that we would actually want to reduce membership at that point, not increase it. But that's a different discussion for a different time.
Yes.
So are you seconding it?
Well, I'm reluctant to second it based on that principle, that at some point, I'd like to see us consolidate some of these committees rather than expanding it.
Then I will second it.
Okay, you can second. You're --
Okay. Any further discussion? Is anyone opposed?
I'm not going to oppose it.
Okay, so it's unanimous. So all three, congratulations.
Are you sure you don't want to make any of them get up and speak? Make it speak, yes.
Start begging. Okay.
Oh, you're in trouble.
You know, they could do this for the council, too. They just increased membership.
Yeah. Okay, now we'll go to the big enchilada, Planning Commission. We've got our three prior applicants that are still in the running. What's your pleasure? And Mr. Duper is back.
Well, last time, I forcefully attempted to get the mayor to side with me, and he didn't, so hopefully this time, he will. They all are very good applicants. They all have very good strengths. My only pet peeve, that's probably not the right word.
Reservation?
No, not reservation. I'm actually trying to say the opposite of that. The one advantage that I felt that Mr. Fred Kosher-Badi had was the fact that he was a civil engineer and had a lot of experience with road improvements. And I just felt that that was a very important asset and a very important experience that we needed for the many other projects that we're going to have in front of us. And so I would like to nominate Fred.
Before we second that, I'd like to know, is Patrick Scalzitti here? Would you like to make a statement in favor of your candidacy? The others spoke at the last meeting where they were considered. You have the opportunity to come forward.
Good evening.
Hello.
My apologies for not being able to make it at the last meeting. Like you said, I was absent. But in my favor, I would like to say that I am beginning, and my career, my experience is limited to nonprofit voluntary work. I served as a director of a development program overseas, and in this program, we were, I was the director, and we were overseeing the completed work of, I don't know, infrastructure, but of planning programs for children in the specific area, and also compliance, working with compliance according to the organization, government, and the district standards in cooperation with a specific church that was involved. So because of this, it was very comprehensive. It didn't specialize in one area of planning or development, but I did oversee the entire project. And it was in the beginning stages, so it had a lot to do with construction, which I do find to be very relevant to a particular position I'm applying for right now. And outside of that, most of my experience is involved in administration, which I just recently completed my MBA, and I'll work in business administration. So with that, I would like to present myself and offer my services to the city. Are there any questions?
How long have you lived in the city?
Three years.
Three years.
Yes.
What do you see as an overall moving-forward plan for the future of the city as far as development? What would you like to see?
What do I like to see? I would like to see us not only grow, as far as infrastructure, I could see areas where we are planning in development. I'm not involved in the community's opinion as far as where we'd like to see, how much we'd like to develop in that areas. But I'd like to see us grow in regards to our diversity here. And the city is quite diverse, and I think we meet the needs of as many different cultures as we can. We have religious and nonreligious communities here, but I think with all of them involved, I would like to see us grow not only in size, but in relation from one community base to another, and also work very closely with the medical center to see what we can do to develop that interrelational aspect of the city.
When you say grow, are you familiar with some of the battles that have occurred in this city prior to your arrival?
No. I will admit that. I wasn't involved in any of those communications.
Yeah, there's two large issues that have been battled over in the city over the last 20 years or so. And one was development of the hills, and that seems to have been settled in favor of letting the hills be without developing them. But there's an ongoing simmering situation over what types of housing to include in the city. Do you have any preferences with regard to density of housing or walkable, livable communities? Do you have any background in that?
I do. Most of my background, as far as real estate and housing development, comes from personal, family, side hobbies, and also businesses. When it comes to sensitive issues like this, I do have my personal ties, but as a representative, I don't see my personal ties to be represented here. I would pursue to understand the community's understanding and opinions, and from that, I would like to pursue those directions, even if at times they do not coincide with my own personal ones. So even though I do lack the current understanding of the issues, if appointed, I would learn very quickly what's going on, and not only learn quickly, but learn quickly what the community wants to pursue. And then that is what I would advocate.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead and hear from the other two guys.
Is Fred here? Kozro Badi.
Was he here last time?
No.
He wasn't here last time. Fred is not here. That's why I wanted to hear from him.
And Mr. Lubinski's here. We've already heard from him. Does anybody have any new questions for him?
No, it was Fred that we haven't heard from that I was hoping that -- all three were invited to be here to respond to questions?
[coughs]
Okay. Because my recollection, and I think the mayor just confirmed it, he was not here for the last meeting either.
Correct.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have any city conflicts with the tenant relationship of one of the applicants?
No.
No, for -- he's trying to say -- renting out city property?
Oh, he's not renting out.
He's not, okay.
He's even here.
Okay, okay. For them. Okay, then forget it. It doesn't apply, forget it. So what's your pleasure? You were going to nominate Mr. Kozro Badi?
Despite reservations about him not being here, I have met him before. He did apply last time, and we did not appoint him, so I was comfortable with it. I do understand Dr. Daley's concern that he would like to hear from him, which is a legitimate concern. For me, I'm comfortable with his background and mostly his experience, and that's why I'm comfortable with that. And that's why I'm nominating him.
Do we want to do this by the motion and second, or do you want to do the secret and then public ballot system?
It worked out so well.
Yes.
It's a disaster.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay. So I believe with four of us present, three need to vote affirmatively. So we could either have a standoff, or we can have a decision. So we have two in the Kozro Badi camp. Is there anyone willing to join in as the third?
I here again to elaborate. When we have an applicant that's missed two opportunities to provide us with his vision of what it means to serve on the Planning Commission, which is a significant assignment, I'm concerned about what that means about his diligence and motivation in terms of taking this on, and so I can't support it.
In the interest of expedition, I will support Mr. Kozro Badi's appointment, and we have three votes, I believe. I'd like to thank the other two applicants. We value your public service, and we really thank you for being interested in putting forward an application. I would like to invite Mr. Scalzitti to gain the experience in the community and maybe apply again in the future. There's a fair amount of turnover on our committees. There are other committees, and Mr. Lubinski saying, thank you for your help in the community.
I concur.
Yeah, the Trails Committee can go to 16 or 12. Okay, so where's my agenda? Here we go. That completes Number 18. We'll move to Number 19, request from the Loma Linda Lopers to contribute $5,000 toward the annual holiday classic run.
I'll move.
You want to move it, or do you want to have Mr. Walling come forward and give us his best argument?
Well, thank you. I don't think I need to argue, but I wanted to make sure that you recognized me with a patch on my face. You said you wouldn't know who I was if I didn't, Mr. Mayor, so. As your custom has been, per my letter to you, we just wanted to make sure that we're doing what the city wants and go ahead with the race. And each year, you've contributed the same amount, so we've gone as far as we can go, making preparations, but we don't want to go ahead of you. And I assume it's still your intention to have a holiday classic this year, and that's actually the purpose of the letter and my presence here. So respectfully, I ask for the donation as we've had it in the past.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions, but I want to commend you on what, for 22 years, I think we can call that a tradition by now. And, you know, when my knees were better, I ran in this. And it was well-designed and organized, and maybe time to put my knees to the test again.
Well, we do have a large contingency of just walkers. You can come walk with me if you want to.
Well, that might be a plan.
Well, we try to do it in good style each year for the city, and I think so far, it's been a good marriage for us, so thank you much.
Okay. Discussion? Any opposition? Okay, then it passes. Congratulations. The Lopers are an institution, and we're proud to support it. Okay, reports of councilmen.
I guess, before we move on, we should point out that if you hadn't noticed, probably the public hasn't, but tonight's our first council meeting in which we no longer have paper agendas. We have transitioned to iPads.
We have both.
I don't know if that's entirely true. We do have both.
We have both.
Well, after tonight, we don't need the paper. And I think Conrad at one time did an analysis as to how much manpower and money we're saving by not going through the process. And I don't remember what the amount was, but it was in the thousands of dollars of man-hours and paper that we were using to do the agendas, and they could be very And they could be very, very thick at times. So we're definitely moving with the times and I welcome the new, I guess, tools that we have been given. My only other request is now we should be able to watch our council meetings on the iPads. It's not quite available yet, but eventually it will be.
Just don't chastise me if I print a few things out off my iPad and bring them with me.
It's okay.
Okay. Any reports of officers?
Shouldn't we make an announcement about the event tomorrow morning? I think it'd be good for the citizens to be aware that the long-awaited I-10 Tippecanoe interchange is finally going to happen. Mr. City Manager, can you give them the details on what happens tomorrow and when this is launching?
Yes, sir. The tomorrow event is a groundbreaking for the I-10 Tippecanoe Interchange Phase 1, which is the portion south side of the freeway, where Sanback is going to add the off-ramp, an additional lane to the freeway, and additional lane to the off-ramp, and also widen the Anderson from the freeway off-ramp to Renner's Boulevard so that we can provide through right turn movement. And the groundbreaking is tomorrow at 10 o'clock at the parking lot of Hometown Buffet. And so you're welcome to attend.
And we commented on this before, but I think it's worth reminding people that there's going to be some traffic types, not only because of that, but SBX has been tearing up roads over in hospitality and so forth. Some of that's going to be occurring in Loma Linda as well, correct?
Yes, the SBX will build a park and ride, parking lot, just to the north side of the slack control channel and build a couple, about five bus stops.
Maybe we should make them finish the one in San Bernardino before they tear up any stuff here.
And then if you could also bring everyone up to date on Stewart Street is going to begin soon.
Yes, sir. The Stewart Street improvement, which is widening Stewart Street from two-lane to four-lane, dip the street down in the middle approximately 15 feet, and build pedestrian bridge across Stewart Street between Anderson and Campus. The project is out to bid. The bid opening is scheduled to be on September 4th. And if everything go per plan, we'll bring it back to the City Council for approval to award a contract on the September 11th.
So there's going to be a lot of adjustments in our traffic patterns that are not always going to be pleasant. But ultimately, I think this is going to work out well in the future.
Speaking of interruption, also on Campus Street, University is working on the construction of the seven-story parking structure. So they did close the prospect ways of Campus and also eliminated a lot of parking on Campus Street. So that's another construction project going on in town.
And I guess it should be noted that we on the IVDA just approved the beginning of the construction for the $8 million Mountain View Bridge that's going to go over the Wash. And the goal for that is to try to get that fixed quickly enough so some of the traffic that's impacted in Anderson and Tippecanoe can move over to Mountain View. So Mountain View may end up starting to get busy here within the next year or so.
Okay, thank you for that. We have an oral report from the Sheriff's Department on crime stats. Will you be personalizing this for us or is this more of a general?
Yes, sir. I've prepared a one-hour PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to come here today and share some stats with you about the enforcement that we're doing here in the city of Loma Linda. First off, the red document here is the Sheriff's Annual Report, which was published just last week. It is available on our website for anybody that would like to take a look at it. And it does a comparison between all the stations, both county and contract city stations, that the Sheriff's Department's responsibility is. I did make a couple extra copies that are in the back. Again, I do have a two-hour presentation for you. So we'll get going here. If you could hit a slide for me. Or what button do I push? First of all, this is actually the slide out of the 2011 Annual Report, which is a comparison of stats between 2010 and 2011. First off, there you have Part 1 crimes, which are actually eight crimes starting in the 1930s that law enforcement agencies were required to report to the federal government so that the Department of Justice could start tracking trends of law enforcement activity throughout the United States. Aggravated... I'm sorry. I think you've got the old PowerPoint, but I'm going to go with it. Because I think it's different than the one in the handout, correct?
If you look at the next page, it's the same.
That was the three-hour presentation that's up there. So the next page is...
We have that, right?
It should be this one.
Well, it's just got another year. And the numbers are different because they're... I think they're January to June comparisons.
Correct.
They're the six-month comparisons as opposed to a one-year.
That should be the first one right there.
Yeah.
Which again is our Type 1 reporting, is Part 1 crimes, that we report to the Department of Justice, which is the comparison between 2010 and 2011. Our department, however, does track simple assault, which is not one of the Part 1 crimes that is tracked by the federal government. As you can see, the difference between 2010 and 2011 in some categories is unfortunately 100% increase, 114% increase with robbery. Simple assaults went up 13%. We did see burglaries decline by 17%. And grand theft autos is pretty close. And then the Part 2 crimes, which is required by the federal government to report, Part 2 crimes, which would be drunken public misdemeanor-type crimes, drunk driving, only arrests, however, our department keeps track of all of those Part 2 crimes. And we had a 2% decrease there. The calls for service for 2011 were just over 16, almost 17,000 there with 831 arrests in the city last year, which I think is the highest arrest ever for the city of Loma Linda. And traffic collisions, about 175. And our resident-to-deputy ratio being about 2,100 residents. As everybody knows, that the region has seen an increase in crime. So we wanted to take a snapshot and try to do some comparisons to see what different things we could do to increase patrol services and try to reduce the activities. We're moving people around based upon intelligence as far as when crimes are occurring and the type of crimes that do occur. So comparing a snapshot, January to June, we took a look at the Part 1 crimes to try to get a comparison where we are in 2012. Now, of course, in 2012, we have the realignment issue with the governor and the jails. And some people believe that that may cause a spike or increase in crime. We also have the economies having some issues. And we also have some local cities that have significantly reduced law enforcement services, which can also affect all the other cities within the region. The one that really jumps out there in the comparison is the grand theft autos, where it's almost 100% increase in the first six months of 2012 compared to the first six months of 2011. The city of Redlands has also seen an increase. In an effort to combat that, we're actually working with the city of Redlands to do some enforcement programs along Redlands Boulevard in both Loma Linda and Redlands. Chief Garcia and myself both feel that this is more a regional issue than rather just an individual issue. So we are joining forces, trying to do what we can to assist in reducing these type of crimes. All the others are pretty much in the middle excluding that burglary spike, which I think that's near and dear to some folks' heart in this room. It's very unfortunate. We've had a lot of arrests within the last couple of months associated to burglaries and cleared a lot of burglaries. And there has actually been a reduction in the last couple of months. Do you have any questions on any of these gentlemen as I go through here? The only difference in 2010, 11, and 12 would be the reduction in patrol hours, which budgets are affecting every municipality as we know in California. We then took a snapshot of calls for service at the calls that we're handling during that same six-month period. So we went January to June in 2010, 11, and 12. As you can see there, a significant decrease in 2011. And most of that was basically contributed to an in-house change in policy as far as when we had historically made arrests of somebody for a warrant, we would have to draw a report number and do a small report. Starting in January of 2011, our department no longer did that. That was only conducted on out-of-state warrants. So all of the stations saw a reduction in... I'm sorry, calls for service, which is also reduced by that. Calls for service, as you see, has increased significantly. I was, I'm sorry, referring to the reports. We are staying busy for our calls for service. Arrests, as you can see, is a steady increase. We are on the mark to go over 1,000 arrests, I think, this year for the city. And the clue... 470 would be actual people who go to jail. Citation arrests would be like somebody for drunken public and they may be injured or have a heart condition. And we would take them to county hospital, give them a citation so that we're not getting them a jail check. Could be a juvenile drunk driving. And long forms would be a felony report that we feel that a person may have committed that crime, but not enough to arrest them. And we would send that to the District Attorney's Office for review. So we're looking at 539 for the first six months of this year.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Can you... I mean, this is a pretty disturbing and unfortunate trend that we're seeing, a number of these trends. In terms of the arrests, can you... Do you have any sense for how many of these are citizens of Loma Linda versus other people that are in our city doing mischief?
I don't know the exact numbers, but I can tell you there is a significant number of people that are transient to the city that commit crime.
And is that, as far as you can tell, is this perceived as kind of easy pickings for robberies and so forth?
I wouldn't necessarily say robberies. There's a lot of factors. You have Redlands Boulevard, which is located very close to a freeway. You have easy on- and off-access to a freeway. We've been able to prove and show that people have committed a crime in Loma Linda, get on the freeway, go to Highland, commit a crime, and get arrested in Ralto just because of the freeway systems we do have in the area. So transitory crime is very easy. All they need is a car. And then you are also coming to areas where, quite frankly, you have more people that have things to take. So certain elements go to certain areas of cities and pillage the unfortunate people there.
You mentioned what grand theft... Grand theft is... At least we have a lot of it because we have a lot of law enforcement.
Yes. You have apartment complexes along Redlands Boulevard. And we see that the significant increase in theft is along Redlands Boulevard, both in the city of Redlands and Loma Linda. And this, I'm sorry, is what I was referring to earlier as far as deputy reports. As we continue to increase our activity as far as the reports for the first six months of the year, and that dip there between 2010 and 2011 would be part of that, the reduction of no longer taking reports for warrant arrests. Response times, which I think is very important to everybody in the community, especially if you have an emergency. Again, the lieutenant and myself have been looking at different ways to deploy resources and working with the city manager to come up with the best avenues and deployment of our resources. And it's actually paid off with a reduction of our response time to emergencies by a minute from 2011 to 2012, which is very good news when you consider a reduction in our staff. Priority 1 crimes, which would be alarm calls or 911 calls when somebody calls 911 and we maybe get a hang-up or not exactly a response or an in-progress crime. We've increased our response time overall by two seconds there. And our average times actually dropped by two seconds. Again, I think a lot of this is based upon deployment and how we have also worked with sharing some resources with the county, Grand Terrace, and Loma Linda in creating a gang team. Those individuals are not responding to calls unless they're emergency or priority 1 calls. So those are additional resources driving through the city that's actually looking for in-progress crimes or people not belonging in a certain area, trying to prevent crimes. So I think that has caused a reduction in our overall times for response. Our on-scene to clearance time is increasing in all of our jurisdictions. And I think part of that is due to the additional paperwork, forms, and requirements necessary for an officer to fill out when he's on scene, depending upon the type of crime. And that would be all I have for you, gentlemen. I'm hour and a half short, but...
I have another question. I know that there are some communities that have active neighborhood watch programs and citizen patrols. How effective are they in helping reduce or control crime of the type that we're seeing at Loma Linda?
They are very effective, in my opinion, because it's an extra set of eyes and ears in the community for us. We encourage everybody to call us if they see anything that is not normal in their community. That's why we're here. We're here to respond. We do have a very active citizens-on-p patrol unit. They used to be separated by cities and county area. Since I've taken over command at the station, I've brought them together and made them one unit so that they have that ability to travel all throughout our region. And we probably have one day, or I'm sorry, a couple hours every day, a citizens' patrol person going through the city of Loma Linda and Grand Terrace. They are very dedicated residents that live in both of the south cities here.
And is that a marked car?
Yes, it says citizens-on-p patrol. It is a volunteer organization. They're not paid. And the light bar is all orange on their car to designate them as a non-sworn person.
In your opinion, would it be worth exploring Loma Linda, having our own citizens patrol? I'm sorry. Okay, I don't recall seeing it.
They're out of our station.
Maybe they're patrolling neighborhoods besides where I'm at.
They're out of our station and they do deploy to the city. They were prior to individually separated as far as...
Yeah, but I think you said they were here roughly two hours a day, maybe, or something. What was it you said, between Grand Terrace and Loma Linda?
Yeah, but that is based upon, for example, one very active person's a schoolteacher in this community. So during the school year, her time that she can donate reduces drastically. And it's based upon the availability of the people that want to donate their time. We do have two active members that live in the city and they went on a three-month motorhome tour. So they were out of business for three months enjoying retirement. But as those people's times become available, we do require that they provide 12 hours of volunteer time per month.
12 hours a month?
Yes.
And do we actively recruit in the city of Loma Linda for that?
Yes, we're constantly recruiting. Sylvia is heavily involved in that. In fact, we're going to have a recruitment table at the Health Fair coming up for that, as well as the Town Hall meeting, I believe we had a month and a half ago. We went over neighborhood watch activities as well as citizen volunteering.
I think what Ron is hinting at is he'd like an application.
Got time on my hands.
I don't want to speak for him, but I think what he's saying is we probably try to expand that, increase the hours or at least increase the number of people involved and maybe even the cars. And it's something that we should definitely consider or maybe organize beyond the actual organized Sheriff's Department, but more in the neighborhood by neighborhood where people are...
Right. And there's some things associated with that that we have to consider too, such as vehicles, which we're going to be responsible for purchasing and radios and things like that. But I think we could probably step up our efforts in recruiting and things like that. But we'll also have to come up with some of those resources for them to use. That's limited too, based on how many cars they have.
Yeah. To somebody volunteering, they have to go through a class to be a citizens-on-volunteer. You know, they learn different rules, regulations, how to direct traffic, how to use the radio.
Well, maybe we're confusing things. I know we're talking about citizens-per-p patrol, but I'm thinking more of an actual neighborhood watch where people are... watch where people are donating their time, they're driving in their own cars, and they're out there kind of keeping an eye on their neighborhoods.
We do have a north-central neighborhood committees, and Betty Starks is a member, one of the members, and these committees are very active. We used to meet once a month, but now we meet every three months. But we are, they are very active at patrolling the town, they're part of town.
Well, and I am certainly not...
And keeping track of the activity that the county sheriffs are doing, and give a report, call the sheriff all the time when they see something happening in the north-central neighborhood.
Well, and I'm certainly not intending to be critical of what we're already doing, but the crime trends are pretty evident, and I think that, I'm anxious to see that we try to explore to see what else we can do to make our city more safe. And I don't know just exactly what that would be, but I think we need to be exploring it.
Well, one thing that I think is, it doesn't take a lot of time, but I think it makes a big difference, is a neighborhood watch program. Everybody should be involved in knowing their neighbors. Everybody's busy and may not know their neighbors as much as they should, and we invite to come out and initiate that, and just simply exchanging phone numbers and emails and letting your neighbor know when you're going out of town, and hey, I shouldn't have a delivery man at my house, and call the police if you see anybody. My wife is huge in that and initiated that in our neighborhood when we had a spike in crime, and it is effective. I mean, that's why we're here, and that's why we get paid the money we do, is to respond when people call. We like it when people call and they see a suspicious vehicle, because generally, they don't belong in the neighborhood, and they are doing something they shouldn't.
I have one more thing to add, I'm sorry. I have to give a lot of credit to Steve. If you look at the statistic for arrests, this jump this past year is because Steve has been our police chief for the past year and a half.
You're getting there, yes.
And it's not a negative trend to have more arrests.
Correct, it's a good trend.
Yeah.
Well, it's a good trend if the other data's in the opposite direction.
Well, the other data could go even worse if you didn't have all these arrests, so...
Well, that's certainly possible.
Yeah, it's one of those things that people mistake. They think more arrests means more crime. No, it means more crime prevention.
Yeah.
More interdiction of crime.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, we're actively looking for different avenues. We're working with Redlands. Recently told you, over the last three weekends, we've had DUI patrols on Saturday and Sunday. Based on some grant money, we're able to get our hands on. So we're looking at every avenue we can to assist in building our forces here in town.
Yeah, please don't misunderstand me. I don't mean to be critical of the sheriff's department or activities that are, but when I'm looking at percent changes of 100%, 114, 78, 33, and then lower numbers after that, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least see what we can do that could begin to turn that around. And I don't pretend to have any magical answers, but I think it's something that the community would expect us to do.
I think we're starting to see the evidence of some of the decisions that have been made in previous years we've all been involved in. You know, budgets are tough and times are tough, but ultimately, and San Bernardino's facing this now too, where they're going to have to reduce public safety because they have no other option. But again, it's just one of those things, and it's, all this stuff is so, it's, everything now is recorded. I mean, there's GPS in their cars, and they, so he can tell you exactly how many, where these guys are at, what they're doing all day, and they're, quite frankly, very busy. And so when we look at a budget and we say, well, maybe we can shave off here or cut back there, there's obviously gonna be consequences to it, and I think we're gonna start to see some of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Okay, then city council is adjourned, and we'll move to the successor agency agenda. We've already done the closed session. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any comments from the public on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, the consent calendar is for your approval.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We are adjourned with that, and we'll move to the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak about housing? We don't have any items on the agenda. If you want to talk anything about housing, now's the time. Come on forward. You want to, you don't have to, come on forward. We're informal here. Three minutes, max.
All right, I have...
The people at home won't be able to hear it, if you can...
Anybody watch?
Oh, we have adoring multitudes.
Is your family... Did you receive one email? Actually, I've read...
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Mary Baxter. I created quite a fuss about the committed monies that were spent on water and sewer improvements, and that wasn't appreciated. I had an officer show up with the water company because I posed, I don't know why. Apparently, it was to intimidate me. But I am very outspoken about this because we have nine houses, at least, in the last month in the area that's designated to have the sewers redone. All have had major backups in their homes, ranging from $18,000 to $24,000 apiece. And that's in the designated area of Newport Avenue and the water basins and so on that are affected upstream. You have a beautiful note on one of your city trucks that says, "Be kind. Don't let your water go, your sewage, excuse me, your sewage go downstream." And it's been going downstream, and our sewers are clogged, and they're backing up. That's one thing. My second concern is, why is only 15% of these new developments going to low income? What do you consider to be low income? And we don't need any more low-income houses. We already have slated areas that were affordable housing, that were built in 1985, that haven't been improved in at all. And the infrastructure on those streets, which you've designated in your report, have not had a dime spent on them or allocated to them. They're still outstanding. They're actually items eight through 18 in your budget. Is my three minutes up? I could go on, but that concerns me. You were talking about crime earlier. We're all packed in like sardines on the east side of Red Mar. We have so many houses, so many people packed together, no parks, no places for children to play, easy places for people to hide, incredibly insane traffic, and it's not a pleasant situation. Personally, I think that's one of the reasons there is crime, because there's so much in the way of indigence coming in from the railroad tracks who jump the trains and then come into the area where, I don't know what, 400 houses have been built that are $400,000 apiece. I don't consider that affordable housing. I live in an affordable house. It was $100,000 when I bought it. It's not even worth $160 now, and I don't have any money to buy whatever you build with the 60 acres that you bought, or some of the other acreage that I've seen purchased by the city that seems to benefit a few individuals and probably with large percentage rates to create more housing, and we don't need more housing. If you open the Loma Linda Trading Post, you'll see five full pages of places for rent that people desperately would like to get rented, but we can't get rid of them because we are affordable housing, not what you're creating. So in closing, I'd like to know, what is affordable housing? How far below poverty level do you have to be to qualify for that? And do we want nothing but Section 8 people in here? And why is there only 15% slated towards that in the new buildings that are being made?
Well, I think we're prevented from responding specifically. Have you spoken to city staff about these issues? Because a lot of things that you've brought forward, I think, would be interesting to them.
Well, my experience has been that out of the seven times I've come here to talk to the water department, there's never anyone in the building. And so I don't know where the staff is, and I don't mean that as a criticism. I'm sure you have meetings, but I'm very concerned about the fact that the mayor and the finance director are also the people that are the successor people. And I have yet to have seen, of course, I wasn't here in your secret meeting or whatever it was, but most other cities have eight people on their oversight committee. I don't consider two or three people oversight.
We have six or seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, I'd like to see that announced. And I'd like to see action taken on the drain storms, the sewers. These streets are, they were built in 1985. They back up, and when you have a storm in December of 2011 that hasn't been cleaned out yet and is backing up the sewers so that people don't have any place for their sewers to go, the pressure from the sewers comes out of their toilets on the second floor when they're not even home.
Can you have that address, please? Is it your house particularly?
My house is one of many involved, and...
What?
One of several that are involved, and I'd rather not...
Name of the street, then?
Pardon me?
Name of the street?
Well, it's Newport Avenue, which actually curves around. It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I think what you need to do is talk to our city engineer, who happens to be the city...
I've talked to Jeff many times.
Yeah.
And it would be nice if we learned how to spell Cambria, which has no E in it, and put a new sign in on our street, which is low income, but we also don't have any lights on our street. That's all. So, yes, I'm complaining, but I don't know where else to take my concerns. I pay taxes, I pay a lot of taxes. I've lived here since 1989.
Well, I think we'd like to catalog your concerns more completely than we can do in...
I'd rather not do that publicly.
So it'd be nice to make an appointment with Mr. Ty Pet to discuss your concerns, and then you won't have to wait for someone to come to the counter. You can actually make an appointment.
Well, I was going to bring my water today, but I chose not to. Drinking gray water is not fun, and I've had it for four months, and it hasn't solved anything. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concerns. We've already done the public hearing. The consent calendar is for your approval.
I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar.
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Any chair or member reports? Any reports of officers? Okay, we're adjourned, and that's the last of the meeting, so thank you all for coming.